Thank you.
Josh, can you hear me okay?
Yeah, Chad, I hear you.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hey, Chad.
What's happening?
That boy, I just know Peter yet.
Thirty seconds. Peter on you. Do you want to give them a quick text or something?
I believe that's him there.
Are you on, Peter? Hey, Peter, do you hear this okay? Is the red telephone showing mute?
Uh, it is muted, yes. So I texted him.
Okay, well, we're gonna start. Special City Council meeting for April eleventh, twenty twenty five, and now called the order. Are there any conflicts of interest to be declared?
No.
No. All right. Anyone making a written or oral public comment? Wishing to address the city council concerning items of interest not on the agenda may do so at this time. All remarks will be limited to five minutes per person. Requested comment electronically must be submitted by email to the city recorder at info@cityofgearhart.com no later than four P M. The day of the meeting. In-person attendees wishing to speak are required to sign in prior to the meeting. We have no sign-ins. Do we have any electronics?
I'm working with Peter here. He's having a hard time getting his Zoom to work. Everybody else is connected and he's gonna go out and come back in. We have no electronic feedback for this meeting, no.
Okay. We'll give Peter just a minute to get online here.
Do have Chief Como, Chief Josh Gregory on, we got Mark McFadden and Public Works in the back as well. I believe four years ago I did Zoom once.
Okay, well, I'm not gonna wait that much.
Okay.
All right, we're going on to new business. That's the public safety building planning next steps. Chad, do you want to give us a rundown on what's going on here?
Okay, well, the meeting was called by councillors Dan and Preston to discuss the city council meeting and the Klosch Group and FFA. And I believe Ms. Dana was going to start by having the discussion. You want to open this up?
Well, first of all, thank you. Thank you guys for bringing on such short notice, but I thought that after our last meeting, it was important. The questions I've been receiving from the public are, you know, is there still even a project? What does this mean? And I don't like not being able to tell people what this means or that we are, but we're not working on it or how we're working on it. So I felt that it was important that we at least have a little bit of a conversation to determine what what we're going to do, whether this project's still viable, whether, you know, and how we're gonna move forward. Identify tasks that may still need to be done. And although we may not have all of the answers, at least come to some kind of resolution about what needs to be done still and who's going to work on the project. I think that we need to do this in a transparent manner since, you know, at the last meeting we elected. But so, you know, okay, so we're not gonna pay Klosch Group. What are we going to do? How are we? Do we need those services? Do we not need those services? And how are we, you know, going to move forward? And I don't think we're not going to pay the Klosch Group. We're not going to approve the change order.
Right, okay, thank you for clarifying that because there is
Yeah, I thought you said pick the Klosch Group.
No, I, no, I said that the last meeting we had, we voted as a council not to approve the change order. So, um, but what we didn't at that meeting discuss was what solutions or how are we going to fill the service gaps that may or may not be created, or will there be service gaps because of that failure to pay the change order? Um, so I think that this project is important. I'm still a thousand percent behind it. I'll be happy to give my reasons later. But I think maybe Chad, if you want to discuss some of the tasks that have been identified moving forward that and who may or may not be filling
Sure, I'm gonna see the documents I'm gonna go over. What I did is I went through the scope for both Klosch Group and FFAR Architect. And broke their proposals down into small, easy, you have them easy-to-bite chunks about what the roles and this is right off of the two proposals that we approved as a council. And then we reviewed when we were going through, what the roles of the individual groups are. So I'm just gonna take you through this to highlight the areas of the ones that are still some things that we need to do. So the Klosch Group and FFA will collaborate closely, bringing the distinct responsibilities. So Klosch Group as a project manager was gonna lead the overall project coordination and management. Facilitate communication between city staff, architects, and contractors. Oversea project timelines, scheduling, and budgeting. Organizing our meetings, preparing agendas in minutes to ensure our tasks are completed. Managing environmental assessments, historic preservation, compliance, and site readiness. That's still some of that we need to be done moving forward, but it's pretty well and completed by just the stuff, the oversight or what they were seeing on our site. And what's remaining for them is guiding the financing and budgeting decisions. Assisting the city with efficient resource allocation. Which is kind of going over, which is going over the cost estimates when we receive them. Reviewing invoices, deliverables, documentation, ensuring quality control and efficient decision-making. And that's right out of their proposal that we approved. FFAR Architect, now one of the the big projects for Klosch Group to do is to help us find the architect. And they did that. And we had the committee that helped us through that. So FFA is under their proposal, they're gonna lead the architectural design, site analysis, and facility evaluation, and they've done that. Develops and presents concepts, designs for multiple site options. Conducts community engagement through structured public meetings to gather and incorporate feedback. Prepares structural and civil assessments, tsunami evaluations, and site infrastructure analysis. And what they've got left to do is on this page and the one after here, providing preliminary cost estimates and cost benefit analysis matrix for proposed design options. We're still a phase where we're working on that. Offering detailed architectural and structural designs for community evaluation and council updates. We're looking at it. And supports the city council on finalizing the recommendations, particularly in preparation for a bond measure vote. So together, Klosch Group is orchestrating projects, administering logistical aspects. Enabling FFA to focus on the community engagement, architectural design, and technical evaluations. Both collaborate community outreach, extreme public input is effective, and effectively incorporated into the design. And then regular joint updates for the city council to ensure transparency in line across all city halls. So as a committee, that's what we've been working on. Is getting information from the staff in Public Works, Police, Fire, and Administrative Staff to discuss where it is that we're at, what we have now, what it is that we want, start working on basic designs, and get us through a process of these town halls. And we've had three town halls so far with one pending. And that is the May Town Hall that's upcoming, where they're going to present to us and the community the pricing for the upcoming ideas that we've got, the two scenarios that we've chosen. So that's really the roles of these two groups. What we have is that the Klosch Group has submitted the change order that we discussed last week. And that they are over in their, within the amount of work they've done. And some of that is due to the city. We've added, we added an additional meeting at the beginning. We've done some things in the meantime where we've had additional meetings within the city because Gear Heart's way is to get more information, to try to collaborate. We've collaborated a few more extra times. We brought in the uh, the building official in a meeting or two with them as well. So we've had some additional work that we've had them do because of what this project is to Gear Heart and how it is that we do our collaboration in our work. So Klosch Group is going to be over and we have that request for them for the additional monies to finish the project through them. Which gets us through May, which gets us through that period of time to where the council can make a decision with the community's assistance on whether or not we actually move forward with a future vote. FFA is on time and on budget. Also noting that they have a twenty-five-thousand-dollar contingency in there. Which in hindsight, maybe we should have had with Klosch Group as well, that they have a twenty-five-thousand-dollar contingency already in the amount that we approved with FFA. And we're, we've only dipped into that a little bit for some of the big posters and those sorts of things that we needed during the community meetings. And they have some ideas of how to potentially help us moving forward as well with some budgetary items that they think that would be really good for the community. And for the city on spending most if not all of that contingency moving forward, but we're not quite there yet. What I need to do is because in the last week, I've been out of town, Klosch is out of town. FFA is not, they're still the desk. Is really collaborate with them to move forward on exactly what it is that we need to finish this project. But we're close and we're getting down to place that they both anticipated we would be at this time. Just getting to that last final piece with their assistance on whether or not we want to move forward with the Klosch Group. And I'm not asking about this today. I think I still need to get some more information from both of these groups. But whether or not we move forward with the change order with the Klosch Group. Or we lean a little bit more on FFA to help finish this project through their contingency costs. So that's where we're at today. Now, also on the final page with Ms. Justine's help. There is a spreadsheet, you know, exactly where we are with Klosch Group. And the invoices that we received from them. We have a contract value of fifty-eight thousand. We spent fifty-four thousand with the remainder of about thirty-five-hundred dollars as of three thirty-one. But we've also had a few things that is this all off of the
These are just, these are just us estimating.
Okay, so this does not include their last. This wasn't the amount for their last invoice?
No, this was their last invoice for March that we haven't paid.
Gotcha.
But that was for three thirty-one, because they bill one month.
So we invited them to the city council meeting a week before last. And we had, we've got a work group meeting coming up. And we have some cost estimation work for them to do as well. Not sure the cost estimate
Is that on your list?
Number twenty-three? Yeah, I'm on the very bottom of that list.
Okay.
It's gonna be meetings in April.
Those were just meetings that we had, you know, we didn't, we were not able to communicate with Klosch on whether or not how long those were. We just estimated out what we thought they might spend.
Okay.
That's your best projection.
Exactly.
So a couple of things to, that I wanna, while, while you're talking about money, I want to make clear is that, um, when we go into the quiet period in or if we go into the quiet period, that is a better way of phrasing. Should we decide to proceed with this project? If we go into a quiet period, if we put measure on on the ballot, come April, neither Klosch nor FFA will be able to do work related to this, public work related to this. They won't be able to be involved in town halls. I know you're
Come August.
Or, did I say the name?
Come August.
Yeah.
Come August, once we put this, once we submit measure, the, the information for the voters' pamphlet, we go into what's known as a quiet period.
Correct.
The city cannot pay any, any of its employees or contractors or anybody else to do anything. So you so should we decide we're going to go forward um, come August, there's a quiet period, so we don't, so what we shouldn't be thinking is how many more months of work do we need? It's exactly what is, is it left that we need from these folks? Um, and what do we feel is important for them to do? Uh, to, to get us to our goal. The other thing we need to know is that every time somebody calls them, they bill us for that. So let's say hypothetically, Preston called them and talked to them, they would bill us for that. Then if you called them and asked them the same question, they would bill us for that. If the mayor called and said, hey, I want to know how much it would cost to have all of this done until November, they're gonna bill us for that also. So it's, I feel it's important that we as a group decide what questions we want to ask them, what tasks we want to establish, we want somebody to ask them. And that we choose one point of contact for them so they don't get duplicate questions so that it's, there, there's no mixed messaging going on. And that we're only billed once to get the information that we, that we want to get, if there is any more information that we want to get. Does that make sense?
May not.
Yeah.
If I had any questions, I would never pick up the phone and call Klosch Group. I would talk to Chad. Good. He's the point person.
Right, Roger. I, I thousand percent agree.
Okay, that's why I was putting this together, just to clarify what it is that we have left. And what direction we're headed.
I, I did write in on their cost estimates on them to be done because I didn't see those words jumbled. I said, we view invoices, deliverables, and documentation, ensuring quality control. Maybe that's what that means. Quality control, it's a double check of what the architects are doing, but I, just for my own because we know that is a task we want them to do.
Yeah, that has not been completed. And as you see, we're essentially out of money on that conflict.
Now, it should also be noted that I think as you said, we don't want to spend the contingency, but we do have a contingency still left under the FFA contract. That money will be returned to us if we do not use up all of that contingency. And I don't think right now we're on track to use up all of that. So some of that money will be coming back. So also keep that in your you know, in, when you're making your decision, keep that in the back of your mind.
I have a list of things when it's appropriate to talk about in regards to FFA on how they think that they could use that money moving forward that would assist the city.
Okay.
When we're ready for that portion of conversation.
Does anybody have any more questions? On what we've talked about so far?
Well, I don't really have any questions with regard to between now and May. Uh, but May to August?
Right.
Um, that would be a question in terms of, yeah.
Okay.
What's gonna happen then?
I can go over what they are proposing, but this is a draft.
Is that FFA?
This is FFA.
Okay.
And this is a draft. And I have, I've only discussed it with them two days ago, Wednesday. And had a short conversation with them, but I haven't had the chance to talk to Klosch about this yet. Um, but so this is from John with FFA. With that contingency fund, so there's essentially a remaining of sixteen thousand one hundred and ninety-three in the contingency fund after other things that have gone in um, into that. So they're proposing in April and May that we continue with community engagement. This is about twenty-four-hundred dollars in value. Provide project updates in April via the website and the blog. They're assisting us with that. They have the technical expertise to do so. Building excitement for the upcoming community meeting on Monday, May nineteenth. They want to push that hard, and so do we. Also, easy for our marketing team to help create press release, postcards to be distributed to community events. We've included a couple of hours to help with those miscellaneous efforts. So that'd be about twenty-four-hundred dollars worth. And that's in April and May. Because really, the whole purpose of this is to get us to the pricing. So that, and to do it through the community involvement. So April and May would help get us through into that a little bit better. Then June and July would be the design summary portion of things. Continually updating the website with outcomes and results from the design process. Create a report summarizing the process and project details. Create a summary outlining how the process has been different than previous bond attempts. And how community engagement has led to fiscally responsible decisions. Right? I mean, we've, we've done this through the public. Public has helped us design it. The staff has included Mark and Josh and Josh have helped value. You can try to engineer this to be as small as possible. They would also provide linking to reporting and executive summary on the website. And then writing materials for the voter's guide to help move forward.
That's FFA.
And that's FFA through June and July. They put another portion down here, which isn't quite correct because they, they're calling this August, September, and October. Where they can assist us with a bond campaign, but they can't because we're gonna be into August at that point. But what they would like to do is look at the potential, whether that be another town hall in July to discuss what people are, what questions they have, the things that have come up between the time that we present in May and to July to give people time to think about it. To come at the city with questions, concerns. Um, so potentially another town hall and then also potentially, uh, maybe some sort of a survey project. So that we can survey folks after the May meeting. Get into July, do some surveying. And then the council has everything that they pretty well would want to help make that decision on whether or not they're going to move forward with the project. You may or may not have some surveying, may or may not have another town hall, but they would help us communicate what it is that we've learned and what we've come up with and how we've got here from May until August deadline, when we just haven't been stopped. And then it's up to the community.
If we were to do a town hall with them, I personally, my, my two cents would be I would want to do it no later than July because I do not want to muddy the waters or give anybody a reason to say that we did anything inappropriate because even it's, it's very hard to answer questions about a project and not demonstrate some type of bias, especially if you are the designers that very much want that project to go forward. So I think that if we were to involve them in a town hall after August, it would be doing ourselves and the, and, and the community a disservice. It could, it could, it exposes to risk. July would be okay. Anything after August, we can do ourselves without you all involved. We could have as many town halls as we want. But I would, I would strongly recommend that we not involve the city in, in, in that, even if it's question and answers, because it is just such a slippery slope.
We did that in July. It would give us an opportunity to hear again from the community, to understand what it is that their concerns are, give us an opportunity to respond as well. And staying away from August would be a great idea, right? Give us some flexibility. A little buffer, if you will.
So getting back to what we need from Klosch Group, I mean, I think that they've done a phenomenal job and already shown their value to us by, by realigning our proposed schedule and making, you know, pointing out to us where we were not being realistic in our expectations.
In what way were we not realistic? Are you talking about the timeline for what get
Yeah, that, that fast we thought we could get through the architect and get through all of the public engagement and, and everything else. But what I I personally, after since they really don't, can't do anything going on further, there's only a couple of tasks. I personally would like to see a second set of eyes, somebody with some knowledge and expertise thinking about our numbers because right now, in this economic environment with maybe there'll be tariffs, maybe there won't. Um, I think that this is going to be something that we want as much information as we can get and we want it's we want more eyes on this rather than less. And again, I told you, I'm in the last meeting, I I want to walk back a little bit of what I said. I don't want to undervalue the importance of the cost estimators that the um, the folks that FFA are going to use, but I think that still it's important. Um, the last time we went out for a bond, it was right after the the Russian-Ukraine thing popped off and all of the prices started going up and there was, there was a real economic crisis and everybody was really worried about the future um, at that point. And we are again going into something like that again, with people not knowing what's gonna happen with the economy. And sometimes figuring this stuff out is, is tricky. And so I personally would like to know exactly how much they would charge us, they being FFA would I personally would like to know exactly how much they would charge us, they being FFA would charge us. To put a second set of eyes on the cost estimates and they do nothing else other than than that. That is, that I see is about.
So you're asking FFA, after they get their contractor to do the estimate, to get another set of eyes?
No, Klosch, I I meant Klosch. Did I say?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, yeah. And what we did with the last. Oh. Was we had the architectural basic design. We had a cost estimator give us the estimations. Uh, and that was also during COVID period of time when costs were coming through the middle along with everything else. And so there was a lot of worry that we didn't know how this was going to turn out. So we got one estimation done and then we actually hired a second estimation company. Using the same information, but they didn't get a chance to see the first estimation. Those estimations came out very, very close. But then we weren't satisfied with that as a city. And we said, before we take this to the public, what we need to do is add contingency to the entire project. That contingency is large, it's twenty percent. Because we didn't know. I feel as though we're going into the same exact scenario, terrorists with that sort of information. So the value in having FFA, which is gonna make a really good job in the architects. Then they hired the cost estimation group. Cost estimation group listed other cost estimations based on FFA's designs, basic designs. And then the goal was to have Klosch Group take a look at those estimations as the third eye in this. And that's what part of their fee proposal was for the change order. Was to do some of that as well.
There's no indication on the change order, what they were gonna do. It was just a request for nine thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars. To go to the end of May. There was nothing that I saw that. Specifically stated what they were going to do. And now if I'm wrong, I don't think I am, but the change order.
You're not, no, I don't, I don't think you're wrong and I don't think that that was communicated very well.
No, that that's a good point.
The closest thing to the change order was this change order includes hours required for attendance or additional site visits, whatever. Uh, town hall engagement, background information, increases and reimbursables.
Yeah, it's a, it's a, it's an incomplete change order. I'm. Could not, I could not in good conscience even consider talking about that and paying that until I get it itemized form.
Yeah, and just, and that's what I haven't had a chance to get from them as of yet. Chad should have had that at the beginning, you know. There there is a. There's a hint upon it, but no, it's it's not solid. So you're right.
Well, it's a dead. I've done business and I've done change orders and you don't go to your client and go. I need another million dollars to finish this project. You know, you got to show some reason why you need that. And if it's something you've already spent money on, then you have to itemize what you've spent money, the money on. And if it's something you're going to spend money on, it's awful gosh darn convenient to have. Something that's four thousand nine hundred dollars. For each month. If you split it in half. I mean, you gotta have some reason why you're going with that. So that's all I need to say about this change order is it's a dead subject until I see some documentation from them. Because I I can't do it. It's not, it's not something I would do as a. Contractor and it's not something I would do as a mayor.
Nobody's asking to re-vote on that change order. The vote, the vote happened. What we're asking now is, okay, what what are we going to pay for? Are we going to pay for anything? And what is it that we we want? Do we want them to tell us what we need or do we want to tell them? What we, what we think we need still going forward?
Well, I'd like to have a little conference with FFA and see what they feel we need. I'm not sure that we've got the expertise where we can go along and highlight a couple of things out of their. Proposal and say, this is what we need from them. We. We need some guidance and if the Klosch Group wants to come in and say, this is what we are saying we'll do for you through the end of May. You know, I can entertain that kind of thinking, but.
This is the whole reason we hired the Klosch Group, is to be our representatives. I can tell you. Being in business in the construction industry, the architects are always optimistic about what their designs cost. Certainly are, okay? An owner's representative is gonna look at those, somebody that's in the business is gonna look at those. And tell us whether or not they're in line or whether they're not in line, right? Okay? And that's the reason why we hired the Klosch Group.
Okay.
Okay, so they were our owner's representative.
That's right.
Okay.
Oh, and but to build off of what what you were saying, so you would like to sit down with them. We as a council need to decide, just for the reasons I gave earlier, is who is going to sit down with them? Are you going to be our council representative if we're all, you know?
No, I want the whole council sitting down with them. I want everyone to have a chance to.
Okay.
Ask their questions, get the input from them. I want every, I want a work session. I wanted an executive session and a work session. Next Friday, but I was told I can't do that because it's Easter before Fri-. The Sunday after that, and nobody wants to do that before Eve. Is that good Friday?
Yeah.
Absolutely not. I'm wrong. So it'd have to be the twenty-fifth or whatever it is, the following Friday. This is what I was told today, about forty-five minutes ago. You're absolutely wrong. You're not doing that. So. But that's what I want. I want the full council involved in this and I want them to be able to say. What do you mean by that? You know, what are you going to do that's going to make me wanna say, yes, I'll pay that? And that's, you know, my personal feeling and that's all I've got.
I don't, I don't have a problem with that. Just remember that that could cost us five hundred to a thousand dollars for them to attend that meeting. I'm not saying we won't do it. I'm just saying you've got to remember that each time we have that, we we do that each time they come in. That's the reason why we were having the discussions that we're having now.
That's why they were running over their budget every month from the second month into their project. They never came to us with a change order saying. These meetings are going more and it's gonna cost you more and this is what, you know. Back in May, back in June, they could have come out with change orders saying, well, we're having now these extra meetings. And we're spending extra time. That's the way you do a change order. You do it immediately, not at the end of the project and when you come in and say, I want ten thousand dollars more to do the same thing. I've already said I would do for fifty-eight thousand dollars. But that's great. And I understand. I incurred costs on behalf of the city by requesting two meetings. One to introduce the Klosch Group in August and the other one in December. So that people would see that they are doing something because we were gonna have a blank slate until. Twenty-five. And I can't, I I couldn't abide by that. You know, we we say we're gonna hire these people and they don't. They don't put a face to their group and we had to have them.
Carrie, we have a lot of things to talk about, but that that vote is done. You you who said no. Three people on the council said no, that's the way that the process works. We, you voted no. I didn't, I didn't ask for this meeting to revisit that vote or to get you to defend your decision. I'm I'm hoping that will come to some kind of a direction going forward. So are we going to have a work, does the council want to have a work committee going forward? Or do we want to do what you've said and and have one meeting where we, everybody talks to them? That's, the council just needs to decide that.
Yeah.
Well. I don't wanna, um, I just wanna speak for a few minutes. I, um. I had to vote no because I didn't have enough information and I needed to do my due diligence, which I feel like I did. First thing I did was come to Justine and get a copy of these records and. Looked at the details of the bills that we've been paying for the last eight or nine months. Um, I talked to some of the people in the audience. Um, talked to Dana, Carrie, to get perspectives on the history. We weren't looking forward, we were looking at the history, part of which I was not a part of. Um, particularly last year, um, up until the, I mean, I think I went to both of the town halls. But, um. It, they they're, they were over budget somewhat, it looks like to me, just by the invoices in September and October. Um, I believe that was about the time that we, they were helping us with. The selection process for the architects and two people that I talked to, I also talked to Chief Comm. Uh, gave them uh very high ratings for what they did. Um, I don't know the people in the Klosch Group. I've sat through a lot of meetings, a couple of council meetings, yes. Uh, but uh, I had to have the time to feel better about what we were being asked to do. Um, my recommendation would be to. To go ahead and approve some amount for Klosch Group to finish up the work through May. Um, the most important thing to me is the cost estimation. They've already participated in the April council meeting. Um, and there's a work group scheduled. Whether or not we need more of these work groups, I don't know. But we could say, well, maybe we do. Um, costs about six hundred and seventy-five dollars each time we have one. Maybe we don't need anymore. Maybe staff could take care of it. Maybe the council would like to each of us take a turn and sit through one of those meetings and see what's. You know, what happens out them. Um. But I feel like we should leave this meeting. Uh. Coming up with a, a good number to fulfill. Their tasks. Through May and uh. Justine's given us a starting point of twenty-five hundred and any other meetings is probably five hundred dollars on top of that. Um, certainly they would be at the town hall, so. That might be an additional. And we still have a balance of a thousand. So we really. That makes it around thirty-five hundred. Read that, right?
Correct.
So, uh, that's at least, at least the town hall would be covered and maybe one more work group maybe.
And and I think that's reasonable. I, like I said, I would still push for the cost estimate, but again, I'm just one of five. And so I understand you guys, if you if you disagree with me, you're entitled to disagree with me. But I would like people to remember also what I said before was that we are under on the contingency so far as long as. We keep on track and and keep a very close eye on FFA. Costs. But not only that, but the sheer amount that we're going to spend on this, the value, we see value in it. This is such an extremely small percentage of whatever overall budget is going to be. If this work is important. To protecting what we have already invested, I would hate to see us cut off our notes despite our face. We've invested a lot of money in this. We have, we, you know, if if I need to throw in a thousand dollars or two thousand dollars out of my own account. I believe in the long run, I'm gonna get my money back. Because my insurance costs are gonna be protected, my, the value of my home is gonna be protected. Because it's not gonna be very long in the future that we are gonna, that we are gonna be able to be serviced by nineteen fifty size fire trucks. It's just not the future and this project is going to get more and more expensive every time we quit it off. And and that's one, but number two is that we are establishing a relationship here with our contractors. And if we aren't careful, if we don't establish a good reputation with our contractors. And and that, you know, we are communicating with them clearly and they're communicating with us clearly. And that when at the end of a project, everybody leaves on good terms. Then that is going to affect the types of contractors we get applying for RRP's or or. Participating in RRP's in the future and it could also affect the costs. So we, we need to be very careful about what kind of relationship we want to. Or a a reputation we want to set up for ourselves as far as how we deal with contractors. So I, again, did not call this meeting to rehash. The, the change order, the change order is done. We don't need to defend by or or prove I'm right, you're wrong. Or whatever. What we need to do is figure out what we're going to do, what we're gonna do going forward. What tasks do we want to do? Do you want to have another meeting with them to establish those tasks? Or do you want us to say, these are the tasks that we think that they need to do? Chad will talk to them. Keep it, keep it under an hour and and get back to us.
The whole thing is that if Klosch had a contingency on their contract.
Yes, I agree.
Okay, the same as FFA did. It'd be eleven thousand six hundred bucks.
Right. Yeah, which is still less than what they're asking. And I would also point out, if you look in their contract, they, it wasn't a. A contractor guarantees these services for this amount. It was, these are the cost estimates, these are, these, this is what you're gonna pay us per hour. And this is what we think our hours are gonna be. They came to a lot more city council meetings than they were intending to. You know, there, it just, things happen. And again, when we established that RFP with them, we told them. This is what we want you to do to do for us and through time, they've, it's been proven that we were, you know. We needed a lot more engagement from them. Your heart is a community that's very engaged or counsellor, but the council was very engaged. Counselors kept saying, I don't understand, I don't know, I might be more of this project. So they were fine. It is what it is. They're here and we, I would hate to see this project. The, for the investment we've made up till now, not be worth anything over this small amount of money. I would just want us to make good decisions going forward. I don't wanna point fingers about what happened in the past. That's probably pragmatically, let's just realize that happened and it can't happen again. Let's move forward.
Okay, so are you asking to put a number down on paper and say, this is what we're gonna do without talking to Klosch?
No, what I'm, what I'm saying is let's, what is it we want done still? What tasks do they want, that we want them to perform? And then we tell Chad, go talk to them, why can't I answer that request and come back?
Okay, and.
Well, is there any reason to think that Justine's numbers aren't good?
Yes.
Justine's.
Well, no, she, Justine's numbers are great, but if they're, if they're charging two hundred bucks per person for an hour, she's, she's estimated one person. I have a feeling that Klosch is going to want, you know, more than one person involved or could potentially want more than one person involved. There's a, again, there's a lot of, you don't know what you don't know until you know. So I, I think our safest bet would be to to, in order for us not to come back and say, well, we underestimated again. Is to have Chad, if he's gonna have to come back to us anyway if our numbers are wrong, just don't give him numbers. And have him go, go talk to them and come back. If it's not reasonable, then we walk away. I think at this point, Klosch knows that they can't, they can't balloon up the price. I think that Klosch understands that we're not going to sign. A change order that doesn't make sense to us and that isn't, doesn't articulate exactly what's gonna happen and it isn't a firm. I think they will also run from this. And I think Klosch also wants this project to be successful. The reputation is riding on it. And I think we should keep all of that in mind.
Okay, make a motion.
Well, I, okay, so I make a motion that we, that will do, we need to establish tasks.
We're not gonna establish, Klosch is gonna do that, right? Because they have the expertise, you're gonna, this is just a motion for Chad to talk to them and find out what it will cost to go through the end of May.
Yeah, so to get.
And to get the, the appropriate. Task done that Klosch was responsible for.
So I can meet with and just clarify again on. Uh, just what is it about Justine and our estimations? Justine's information is correct, top, below are just her estimations. Right? So there's gonna be some flexibility on that. It's not that, you know exactly what that is. Um, what I'm hearing is is that I can get. We want to get through the potential of another cost estimation check using Klosch Group. We wanna find out how much that is going to cost. That should get us to the end of May. That should get us to the end of May. After the next town, so we want, we have the town hall meeting that we would want them to attend.
The preparation for the town hall.
And don't check the, the cost estimation. We were curious about what that's going to take. Moving forward, those are really the tasks that are left over for the Klosch Group that are most valuable to us. It's the May, town hall and cost estimation check. Verification, does that sound right?
I believe so.
Okay, I'll ask them if there's anything else in there that they think that would be important and I'll report it back that, that to you.
Well, there is that. Sixteenth work group. It's already scheduled.
Yeah, yeah. I'll get estimations of where we're at, where we're going.
And is that just a check-in, I understand that they've had check-in meetings where it's just. Yeah, everything's going well, that's it, but then we get charged for it.
We've had a few of those, yeah.
Okay, well, we don't need a check-in meeting until we get some realization on. What's gonna happen with Klosch. And where we're going to the mayor, okay?
Well, I, I have not attended any meetings where we said, hey, is everybody good and then gone about our day, so I don't.
I was just told it was a check-in meeting.
Well, I have not attended any such meeting.
Okay.
Otherwise, I, otherwise.
Staff asked, staff, staff has had those.
I understand the importance of bill.
Staff has had those check-in meetings, so that we're there, just making sure we have all the information. So, okay, we'll be careful moving forward.
All right, so you got a motion to, uh, have Chad, Chad?
I, I just, let me ask a couple more clarifications, there's also, um, a question of surveying, would you, surveys? Or some kind of polling or something like that? Is that, um, is that something that we're still interested in doing, is that something that FFA would handle, just so I'm clear on my mind, because we've talked about a lot.
We don't, no, no, uh, so there's no polling in what FFA has talked about. Uh, in regards to the next three or four months. They didn't, uh, say that they would do any polling in there, um, they've recommended it in the past, you folks have recommended getting that done as well. Uh, Klosch Group doesn't have any polling, so that would be in addition to above. And Peter, I know he's online right at the moment, he's going to be taking a look in what. The costing could be for some sort of poll that we can do after the May meeting. Um, Peter, are you there? He was still having troubles, he's going back and forth with me a little bit.
Well, I know when I talked to Peter, he's mentioned that he's already been in contact with someone he's worked be, with before, who's a poller.
So I can get that information out as well, so that we have a cost estimate. Estimate about what that would be. But we're not quite too sure how we would do it, um, or what it is that we're pulling or how large this hole would be. But I think a simple poll, getting the community's feedback is to what they know, what they don't know. Whether or not they know the importance of this work that we're doing or not.
Okay, and what was your other question, Dana?
Yeah, well, that was it, was would, I would like to know how much FFA would charge us, how much Klosch Group would do it? Because I do not like the surveys that have come out from the city and I don't think anybody trusts them, I think that surveys or polling or whatever. Should come from somebody else.
Yeah, that's why Peter's looking in as his third party.
Well, but, I, I would like you to just ask the question from Klosch Group, how much and what that would look like.
Okay, so your motion?
So I'd like.
What?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve five thousand dollars as a change order. Uh, let Chad work out the details using Justine's numbers as a starting. Point. That gives. Quite a bit of leeway to that. Um, and if. They burn through that before the end of May, we'll discuss it again. A second.
So one clarification, so. They still have three thousand five hundred and forty-four left?
Uh, well, but you don't have to spend the five thousand if, if.
Yeah.
We don't end up using it, but to give you a cushion.
We haven't written any checks yet, or this, these.
For little twenty-two.
So I need that in addition to.
So you're, you are okay spending an additional.
Oh, okay, I, I understand what you're saying.
Well, I'm just, no, I'm, I think she's saying five thousand on top of the, the budget.
But there's also May, there will also be. Something in May.
Right.
Which. Isn't really on here yet.
No, because I, we didn't have anything. I mean, it isn't just how much money they have left, so. It's your, you're maxing it out with an additional five thousand. With these assuming. Or to go. Just clarify.
Right, um, yes, okay.
Okay, motion second, any discussions? Here are no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed, nay? Rate of one? Okay, is there anything else we need to discuss now that we've got the Klosch Group and FFA being interviewed by you, Chad?
Uh, no, I've got another document here that was kind of outlined to see. Uh, the different phases of this project, so that you can understand how that has been moving forward, I forgot to give that to you. But just to clarify, I'm gonna work on getting, uh, the final number, uh, from the Klosch Group to cost estimation portion of this. We're gonna look at the cost of potential polling, you know, and how many meetings we've got left, how much money we're going to spend getting to that. Uh, and any other contingencies that may come up, I'll get that information out of both FFA and Klosch Group and report back to you. Looks like I've got up to five thousand dollars in addition to the contract amount. To at least start moving forward on that, doesn't mean I'm gonna spend it, I'll probably have the answers to these questions. Before we really get into spending any of that money, so we still have an opportunity, but that gives me and us, the staff, the way we're moving forward with some of those conversations. Does that sound right?
Uh, yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Anyone else have anything else?
Do we, do we need to assign people, is there no longer going to be, um, council appointment to the work? Group, do we need councillors on the work group?
I think they want, want work and I need to verify this with Klosch and FFA, I think the work group is pretty well finished. We've gotten through two town halls. We've gotten, uh, through the programming. The basic design, we've had five designs to look at. Brought it down to two, they're working on the cost estimation to two, so really our goal is to get as much information as possible through the May. Town hall meeting and then go from there, so I'm not sure that the work group, which had the two councillors on there, is necessary to move forward.
So there's not gonna be a meeting?
Um, I think it might be between staff and FFA to make sure that we've got all the information. Um, and potentially Klosch Group, that's what I need to talk to them about. If they can, uh, but yeah, there, there's not much more to do, we're, we're on schedule. We're on task, we're just a little bit over budget. So things are working out as they were anticipating to work out, as we were anticipating it to work out. And I think we've got the product, the, the product, the only thing to worry about is what the future is going to bring and how we're going to verify information. And make sure that we got the best project to forward. An election, whenever.
So then come to you when they say they need the advice of the council right now, then that mean, we're gonna do a council meeting?
Then we'll figure it out from there, I'll, I'll get their, I'll get their feedback on what we just talked about. And then I will get back and report that back to the council. And then if we have to have another meeting over the work group. Uh, work session, then I'll work with Christie, we'll come up with some dates, I'll let you know what the cost of that work session would be. Uh, and then, uh, we can go from there.
I would like a brief set of minutes, perhaps somebody on staff could do just a brief. You know, bullet points, doesn't have to be like every word said of the, uh, April sixteen. For council or put it in our packets, but.
Ms. Christie, did you hear that? I'm gonna need your assistance with that during the next meeting.
Yes, if Klosch attends, it is their responsibility to do agendas and minutes, so.
Yeah, we just wanna make sure it happens. Thank you.
Yeah, I don't need a set of minutes that costs two hundred dollars, no.
Yeah.
Ten minutes. Take notes for you in the meeting.
We'll do that moving forward with everything, whether it be Klosch Group doing it or, or us, so that you're informed of what's happening moving forward, because I think we're pointing out where we have a better understanding. Of what the tasks are that we need to complete for this, I think we have better understanding of, uh, the, the collaboration between Klosch and FFA. And what it is that we really wanted them to do and involve us in their proposals. Um, and with that better understanding, maybe even forward a basic decision. Try to keep, to get the public involved and informed.
I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll put the motion to adjourn.
Second, please.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye, okay.
Aye.
Thank you, Gus.